All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. It is, uh, start time 7:01 here at the special meeting, um, Tuesday, October 15th, uh, at the middle school. Uh, so if you could first, I'll please rise for the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible)
All righty, thank you guys all for coming. To my left, I have Nicole Salison, she's our office manager. I'm Zachary Karen, the chairman of the board. We have, uh, Jason Quinn, uh, Greg, uh, Greg Logan. The three of us are voting members on the case. Donovan Gill, and then we have, um, Margaret Mitchell, our, um, zoning board attorney, and Peter Williams, who is our adjourn. So, the first thing we're going to discuss, um, um, if you guys want to present your, uh, the new preliminary drawings you have for the new plan, you want to start with that?
Sure.
Oh, yes, and, uh, we will be adjourning at 9:00 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, uh, for the record, Chris Rixtino, counsel for the applicant. Um, when we were last before the full board, uh, it was August 14th or thereabouts, and at the time, we had received substantial feedback, both from the board, other, uh, local boards in town, local officials, and the audience regarding our preliminary plan, which is shown up, uh, to the left of the board there on the stage. And some of the concerns we heard were about, uh, overcrowding in schools, capacity for sewer, capacity for, uh, water supply for the project, um, just the sheer number of single-family homes. And we also heard from several sources that, uh, there was a desire in town and a thought towards providing for varying building typology, which means something other than single-family homes. And I'm sure, as we all know, if you live around town, there are very few options other than a single-family home, despite a market for that type of product. So, we had some, uh, back and forth with the board about the concept of providing a varying housing typology, which would be something on the order of townhouses, or cottage-style homes, or duplexes, um, in addition to single-family homes. And we left that meeting with the sense that the board would be, uh, receptive to the idea of moving in that direction. There would, obviously, no decisions were made, there wasn't a vote on it, uh, but the applicant took some risk in taking the time after that meeting to prepare a plan that showed some of those options that the applicant would propose in response to all of the concerns that we heard from the various stakeholders, uh, at the last, or up to the last year. So, subsequent to that, um, in, uh, mid-December, uh, sorry, mid-September or thereabouts, uh, we held the work session. Uh, in August, at the August meeting, the board appointed one board member to participate in the work session, and the purpose of that is to facilitate communication of those concerns, uh, facilitate communication of, uh, what the board member that participated in the work session heard during the public meeting, and heard as far as concerns or, uh, directives for the applicant to take back and apply to its plan. So, we held that meeting on September 12th, and at that meeting, having heard, uh, a desire for, uh, a different type of project, uh, that involved varying housing typ, various housing typology, uh, we presented a, a preliminary draft schematic plan, just to say, "Okay, is this what you heard, because this is what we heard?" And that was the goal, just, you know, "We heard this, we can propose this, is this, uh, are we even speaking the same language here?" It was essentially the goal. So, during that meeting, and, and the board's, uh, representative, Mr. Logan, is going to, just, at some point during tonight's meeting, uh, recap what he heard, um, and obviously, that, that meeting actually was publicly televised, it was noticed, um, you know, for anybody that wanted to attend, but it was essentially the nitty-gritty of, um, the details, and getting into how the project fits together, and what this, uh, alternative proposal might look like. Um, so, we're here tonight with, uh, both, a plan that incorporates the feedback from the August meeting, and then the details that, uh, were garnered from the September 12th meeting. And what that involves is a plan that is now changed from the original proposal, which included 94 single-family homes, uh, that obviously, single-family homes, you're talking about three and four-bedroom homes, that, um, have a burden on the school system, have a burden on the sewer and, and water supply system, because they're, uh, an intense use as far as families and, and, uh, uh, just the burden in that regard, to a plan that now proposes, uh, and again, nothing has been changed officially, I mean, we're, we're floating this schematically, and no decisions have been made, but we're here to show the board and the audience tonight, uh, a plan that proposes 55 single-family homes. And then, uh, the remaining units will be a mix of cottages and condominium-style homes that the applicant has proposed on other developments in other towns, and has found a significant market for. So, what that carries with it, uh, is actually, although there's an increase in, in unit count, there's actually a decrease in the total number of bedrooms, overall, uh, a deep, which results in a decrease in the burden on schools, results in a decrease in the calculation for water supplies, sewer suppo, uh, sewer capacity, um, actually, it reduces in significant reduction in the amount of impervious area on the site, uh, saves some extra open space, particularly critical open space, um, to the direct abutters both, um, near the front of the project and along Country Hill, uh, where we've been able to preserve, uh, a no-disturb zone, at least on the preliminary plan that we're proposing, um. So, with all of that built in, and with all of those considerations, uh, at play, we're going to present that plan tonight for everyone's, uh, comment. I don't know if the chair would like it this time for Mr. Logan to weigh in, just to recap what he heard, and convey his, his concerns at the, uh, at the work session, and then we can turn it over, uh, to the applicant's team to give a presentation of what that, that alternative proposal might look like.
Sure, uh, great, I'd like for you to do that first, Owen, you do that.
Yeah, so we had that meeting, like we stated, uh, September there, and, um, you guys were asking us in regards to what type of houses, and some of the concerns of the abutters was the traffic study, obviously, you know, posters for the wet, uh, wetlands, the front pools, that might be on the lot, um, how the buses were going to come in, whether they're going to go on the road, and all these things like that, and a lot of concerns what we had talked about was mainly the list of what the abutters were concerned with. Um, then at that point, we were talking about, uh, doing less one, three, four-bedroom homes, like we had stated, jumping into a different style cottage-type house, showing this in the hills, if you guys would like this stuff. Making it much more closer, less impact on all the neighbors, um, and then there was also the, uh, the, uh, where I was stating is the traffic study was very, very big with this concern with the abutters, and obviously, we, we were going to put more, uh, well, not, not going to, but we were going to discuss about keeping more tree line over our Country Hill, giving them more, uh, buffer zone between the two properties, bringing these a little further away. Um, those are the things that we had discussed, but it was a very good first work session, um, brought down the amount of people that were going to be in the units, just on the first discussion, but anything else would go forward from here, but, again, we couldn't make any decisions at the meeting, we just discussed a few ideas, but the abutters, the board, take a look at what we came up with, I think they had a great plan, uh, we can start with that, and then we go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely very, very interested in what they've been doing so far, so I would love, I'm very curious to see what it's sort of.
It's much better at this point, and I'm saying it's exactly what we're going to go with, but it's just a good.
Absolutely, without a doubt, yeah.
Uh, there was, like we stated, it was definitely, um, traffic study, wetlands, and, um, keeping a buffer zone between the property lines. They were all for ideas, and, again, I couldn't answer those, just those points, so while we get to discuss them, but, um, the plan that they're presenting, I think it's a lot better than the original.
Excellent. All right, gentlemen, whenever you are ready.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we're just going to put it up, uh, in static form first, so that I can just point out a few things and introduce it, and then, um, Owen is going to, uh, play a video that shows how these, uh, homes look actually built, because these are all products that we have proposed and actually successfully built and, and sold in other towns. But if you, if you look over there, um, this is the revised plan, and again, you know, you're looking at it from afar, uh, so you can't see the detail, but compare that, um, to the plan that you see over here, which was the original layout. And, again, very generally, um, you're looking at all single-family homes throughout, an extensive roadway network, um, with smaller lots for single-family homes in this development in 94 units. And then, again, just preliminarily, and at a very, uh, high level, all the single-family homes now are in these white lots here, uh, in this area. Uh, and then we have the varying housing typology, which, um, Owen is going to show in the video in a second, in this area, and this area. And, um, you know, just so everyone knows, this plan has already evolved since the work session, based on the concerns that were expressed regarding traffic, where the bus drop-off is going to be, density, um, actually, as you can see, um, on this plan that's up in the, uh, screen here, uh, originally, uh, when we went to the work session, we were proposing some housing down in this area as well, another building here, and having heard concerns about, uh, you know, bus drop-off and traffic flow along the street, we, we actually went ahead and proposed to eliminate that building that was proposed for there, and have a little turnaround here, uh, that will provide convenient, safe, uh, access for, um, a school bus, if, if that's what the school bus company ultimately decides. So, I said at the outset, when we started with the first hearing, and we put the plan up, uh, for everyone to see, the first words out of my mouth were, "This plan will change." And this board's familiar with the 40B process, uh, for those of us that have been through it, you know that these things evolve. I, I think the plan's already evolved, uh, to a significant degree. Again, we haven't settled on anything yet, this is preliminary and schematic, I think at this point, I think we'd like to come out of tonight's hearing, uh, with some clear direction, and then we would go back and do some more extensive and detailed engineering, um, to get this to the point where it's, again, from a preliminary point of view, uh, something that we can move forward with out of the 40B process. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Owen, and, uh, he could play the video that includes some more details and photos about what the proposal is going to look like.
I just want to explain what, what we're going to be seeing. This is, this is an animation video that we put together, that will first highlight this area, and then will, will drive you through the actual, um, how, uh, buildings that will be happening there, and then it'll highlight the, the other area, and also ha, uh, drive, drive through, and then after we finish that presentation, we will actually show you another presentation of actual home, this is animation, the first one will be animation, the second one, actual homes that we built that are consistent with what we're proposing right now.
(inaudible)
This is a cottage-style development that we have built, and I'll give you a little focus. This is what we're proposing, that condominium section, again, that slide, I mean, it's actual pictures. The single-family section. So, the three communities that we were shown are, I mean, they're up, they were welcome, anybody who wants to go visit them, we'd be glad to take them and show them what they, what they look like. I mean, one of them is right down this street.
Uh, so, one quick question, uh, do any of the projects you have done so far, do any of them have all three types in one development?
Yes. Uh, that's in the Varan Hills in, um, in, uh, Lakeville.
They have all three types in that one?
Well, the, the condominiums are being built right now.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, single and duplexes, uh, are, are built already.
And, and they have cottages, or will have cottages, or no? No, not that one, okay. I'm sorry, I'm actually very scary.
So, I'm going to turn it over to, um, the project engineer in a moment, just to describe the major, uh, project features that have changed as far as the roadway and, uh, some of the reconfiguration. But I think what we were noting earlier about the varying housing typology is that it's not age-restricted, but it's age-directed. So, it fills the gap for either the young family, uh, young solo professional that, you know, drives to the train station, hops on the train, goes to Boston, comes back, um, and the aging population, that doesn't need a full house, but the, the kids are away, they might keep an extra bedroom for, uh, a study, or, you know, when the kids come and visit. So, that, that's the idea, um, in, in varying, uh, with the condos and the cottages, that overall, uh, even though there's an increase in overall number of units, um, the type of units is going to, uh, result in less overall impact, because, again, they're age-directed, but not necessarily restricted. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Jacobs Drizzle Engineering, and again, they're just going to point out some of the major, uh, aspects of the project that, that have changed based on this plan.
Hi, my name's Ed Jacobs, Jacobs Drizzle Engineering, and this is the original design that we had, and you can see, we had this roadway going down here, which is, um, ends at a cul-de-sac, and there's really not that much, uh, green space left over here, and on the new design over here, you can see we've added, um, this big area of green space here, and there's a lot more open space. Again, up in this area here, where these condominiums are, um, if you look back on this original design, this is really congested in here with all these lots, there's not really that much open space in here, and when you look on here, you can see that there's a lot of open space around these condominium units. This area up in here is the single-family homes, um, there's a lot less roadway up here now, as you can see here, we had this long cul-de-sac come up right to the very end, long cul-de-sac come up here to the very end with a ladder road in the middle. The new design has more of a loop coming in this way, we've been able to get some open space in here, open space in here around these cul-de-sacs, and there's a lot less roadway. Um, this is a much more, um, excuse me, this is a much more, um, intense design here as far as, uh, impervious area, there's a lot less impervious area. I haven't actually run the calculations yet, but I think you can even see with the naked eye that this is a lot, there's a lot more open space, and it's a lot less impact to the environment with this new design.
Um, as part of also, just like Mr. Logan pointed out to the board, in the, in the, in the work session, we took some comments that were pointed out to us, and, uh, uh, we addressed them in this, uh, in this plan, where what we did is, um, one of the comments, of course, was to eliminate this, uh, six-unit building, and, uh, have, and have a turnaround here for, uh, a school bus, or, or mail pickup, or, you know, which we have, we, we allowed for that here. Also, um, some walking trails, we, we instituted that. Uh, also, a comment was made that we, we pulled the road down from this plan, if you s, if you notice, yeah, we pulled the road down to allow us to leave, um, well, first of all, we, we, uh, less, less, slightly less necessary, but to allow us to leave a strip here of non-touchstone, to, to try to, uh, leave a distance, you know, a distance with, with the abutters. Um, so, overall, we really believe that this is a, a, a more dynamic, more versatile plan, uh, and, and less impact.
And again, um, the goal is, as, this plan, if, if we get some really clear marching orders tonight, I think the, the goal would be to go back and engineer this plan, which might result in, uh, finding that we have some additional space, and we're able to move things around and provide for, um, buffers where, uh, you know, we'd like to, like to see some additional buffers. So, hopefully, um, we can have some discussion about that, um, this evening, but, you know, with the chair's pleasure as to what, uh, we'd like to do from here.
Um, sure, yeah, I had a couple of questions, um, with the access, is that what you're, is that going to be the, um, emergency access as well?
So...
For Egress? I think that that was discussed among the board, that that was, that could be a potential issue. We just didn't know on the specific, on this plan that you gave us where that would be.
From the condominium area?
Yes.
This area?
Yeah, we had one coming from, uh, from the road to road.
Yeah, and that's not, uh, it's not shown in final on this plan, I think that's the type of thing that would have all, that we'd have to engineer that as well, but as far as the entrance configurations, uh, it's still the two points of entrance.
Uh, I mean, I, for one, one of the biggest ones that jumps out at me is taking that bus stop off the road. That's huge. I mean, that was a big concern of a lot of residents and myself. Um, now, I know last meeting we discussed what the bus company could and couldn't do in terms of where they could go, are we sure that the bus will be able to go that far into the property, to the private road?
So, again, that is something that has to be worked out with the bus company. We, we talked about approaching them and approaching the school department on that issue, but, again, we have to start taking those steps to see how that's going to work.
Okay.
Um, and my other question too was, um, I know, again, it's all very preliminary, but were there any talks of putting a playground, and if so, where would it be? I know you put woods, uh, woods is a general term for open space, I just didn't know what you guys were thinking.
Right, so generally speaking, uh, when you're dealing with single-family homes, and you have yards, you have open space, it's less of a concern, where we have some of the communal living now, uh, Ed pointed out that we have this open space here, and we have space here, we could do that, however, when the discussion regarding playgrounds ensues, uh, before the board, you really get into whether or not it's, it's desirable, although the regulations and the guidance talk about having recreational facilities available, um, you know, when it comes down to it, people don't necessarily want a full playground on their development, I think in some of the photos you saw, there's a meeting space, there's a gazebo, uh, those types of things are feasible, but as far as like a playground, when, when that idea's kicked around...
Oh, yeah, I wasn't, I wouldn't say either way that I was, personally was saying it was, or wasn't needed, I was just curious if what, I know that we discussed that briefly last time, I just didn't know what you guys thought, that's all.
Yeah.
I, I do, I personally, I'm, I do like the idea of more meeting areas, like you guys had in those pictures, more supportive, but, again, if people have yards, I guess playgrounds aren't the, the number one thing, but...
We are proposing, uh, a garden here.
Idea.
And, and, uh, walking trails, but, um, in other subdivisions that we've done, um, playgrounds are really a liability more than, you know, they were not very helpful. Um, but, like you said, meeting areas, like a little gazebo gathered here with a, with a, maybe a grill, a barbecue or something like that, we were happy to...
And you haven't felt that in, in other projects that people were expressing a need or for a playground or anything like that, they were intent with what they had?
No, no, as a matter of fact, like in Stony Ridge, uh, that we have here, um, I mean, it's actually, uh, we have a park, a small park.
Right, right.
And, and, uh, some, the kids are coming and breaking the, uh, the benches that we have, and we keep replacing them, and so, you know, it, it, it's more, more of a barbecue area is, is more desirable than just kind of a, you know, like...
Especially with condominiums, if people want to stay there and then lose the aspect of having a yard, and they give, they give them something to at least have a try on.
Well, that comes, this, uh, right from...
Um, that's the first stuff I had, I meant, uh, move the board, you may go ahead and ask what you have. Well, I guess, I, well, I'm sorry, Greg, maybe you should, I guess, go first, I guess how this plan fits specifically with what you guys talked about in the day first.
Yeah, but, like he said, though, there is hoopies from one entrance to the other, some type of hoopies, like, well, possibly gravel, driveway, or gravel road going between the two, with condominiums, with those. Uh, the other question we have is, uh, the other question I have is, uh, where we have the garden. Um, and now, we have a garden underneath the high-tension line, um, sure that there's still going to be an easement through there, we have to have an easement through the high-tension lines, if I'm not mistaken, that are going through your property, and then, if I'm not mistaken, is the garden underneath the high-tension lines.
Yeah, so, just, the, the way that works is, we actually own that, that space, they have the easement, so we can... so we can use it in any way that does not interfere.
I do understand that, but stated, but now, I know they go up through there a lot, and if they had to go in there, it probably would ruin some of the stuff. I don't know, I mean, I know this is just preliminary, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with them, not that. And the gravel road that we discussed going from road to road, obviously, we just got some clarification on that. Like I stated, a few things that we, everything that we talked about inside there was to try to move less impact towards the wetlands, less impact to the butters, bringing everything more or less contained. We did discuss something about the bus area, and I did, I do know through the other 4Bs, after this goes to the law, this, that goes to the school committee, they're the one that moves out of the bus company, gives an approval for that. There's a lot in here that might change, but this is just an idea where we're based on pretty much everything he stated, we get on.
For the, just like Greg, for the point for the butters, just on, do you remember the exact change from what this no touch zone was versus the other preliminary drawings they had?
No, no, we, at that point, there was no real engineering that was brought, we had discussed.
I just didn't know if it was discussed that night, that's all. Jason, go ahead.
I think the biggest question I had, you may or may not have told me, is what's the, what was the decrease in bedrooms from the last plans, this proposed plan?
So I believe overall, it's a reduction of about 10 or 15 bedrooms or so, I think 10 or 15, but again, the idea being that it's now age directed. So a lot of those bedrooms are the extra bedroom for the kids when they come over, the grandkids, or the young professional that uses it as a studio or office.
Interior.
Right.
In the cottage-style houses, are you finding, is it generally more elderly who settle down in those or not necessarily?
I think Bishop could speak to that.
Entirely, either childless families live there except for affordable units, because we cannot restrict that, well, we're not restricted anyways.
I have another question.
Whether, you know, empty nesters or young families, I don't like to call them aging population, because I fit in that category. Empty nesters or otherwise, primary, we actually, in that Norfolk subdivision, we don't have one resident over there that has kids. They're all either grown, and you just come for a visit, except, except of course, the affordable units.
Will all of those be single-story? I mean, I know it's not...
No, they're all two-story.
They're all two-story, okay.
The cottages.
And is the, is the ground floor going to have the master bedroom?
Yes.
Okay.
They have that option, either first floor master bedroom or second floor.
Okay.
Any other question I have is, I'd be curious to see if the impervious reduction...
Calculations, we'll be glad to provide you with that.
Yeah, so we held off on doing the complete calculations as to the difference between one and the other depending on type of direction we wanted to make, but we can...
But definitely, the roadways, our network is less, which contributes a lot to that to the...
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Okay, so first things first, I guess, as the developer knows, I am visually impaired and could not see the presentation. So having checked with counsel at some point, if Owen is willing, I'd like to set up a time with Owen where he can visually describe to me where those videos were, so that I have a, I have something more in my head as to what is, what was shown. I'm sure he and I can work that out.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The other thing that I have is actually a whole bunch of questions, so sit back, relax, we'll give it a minute. But here we go. The first question I have is, I want to go back to the question of the potential number of bedrooms. So you're going now to, correct me if I'm wrong, 55 single-family homes with three bedrooms each, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's 165 bedrooms. Take me through the rest of it from there. How many cottages?
Five, yeah, 27, like two bedrooms each.
So that's another 54. Okay, so now we're up to 212?
Correct.
Okay, and then last but not least, what?
Condos.
How many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
So that's 34 times two is 68?
38 times two.
38 times two is 76. And what did we say, 212? That's 284. And what were we at before in the singles?
94 times, 94 times, actually. We were at, 25% of the homes originally, we were, like in other subdivision, we're going to go four bedrooms, and 75, we're going to go three bedrooms. But we are, so the total is like 305, 310 bedrooms.
So there's a slight reduction in the number of bedrooms, but again, the key is age directed, it's towards...
I hear that.
Right, so we think, we believe that that's going to reduce the impact in that sense.
And are you expecting, again, I know these are all preliminary plans right now, but are you asking for, is your plan to have all of these have one and a half baths, two and a half baths, what?
So generally, we don't condition that in the permit as far as what the interior of the units looks like, other than bedroom count for purposes of the engineering. Is there a concern about the number of bathrooms, that you want that as a condition?
If we were, if that was a concern and we wanted to have these as two and a half baths, at least for the three bedrooms, can that be done?
We'd have to look at that internally, it's just sometimes there's...
I'm asking because the other development, Stony Ridge for example, is two and a half baths.
Right, there was some discussion about that, I recall, as far as the condition. The preliminary floor plans, and Owen can walk you through the preliminary floor plans to describe to you what we're proposing as far as the layout of the units, where the bedrooms would go, where the bathrooms would go, how we see them fitting together and how they work for, say, the empty nester or the young professional. But as far as at this point, what the number of bathrooms is going to be per unit, other than the preliminary schematic plans that we've included, we haven't, we haven't concluded that yet.
So there's room for discussion there?
Yes, if that's of concern.
We'll just make sure that that's something that's still on the table. And focus on the streets for a minute, on the different street areas. Is it your intention to build streets or the roadway system within there so that eventually it can be considered for public access? The town can eventually take that over? And if yes, take that a little bit further with me, tell me what you're looking at for width and so forth. Because that's a concern that I know we've had in other developments, not just with you guys, but with other folks as well, potentially, is whether or not the road system that's developed can become a public way. And that certainly affects the rate that the residents will be paying if they, if they were to have homeowner's payment.
Right, so the main road, and Mr. Gill, Owen can walk you through how it's changed or the proposals changed. The original proposal had several stubs off of roadway network that included a ladder or cut through in the middle of the project. This new proposal has one flowing roadway that sweeps through the development, and then the cottages have one spur off of that. So the main roadway, at least the main roadway, and likely the main spur, are going to be fully developed subdivision roadways that should comply in all respects with the town's subdivision rules and regulations, and may in some ways exceed them. So we would ask that the town accept it as a public road. Obviously, that's something that happens through a legislative process that is not necessarily something this board can condition. So our intent would be that yes, they are accepted as public roads.
So I believe in other projects, they were conditioned for whether or not they would be built to become public roads eventually. There were, there was language.
Yep, and we can, we can discuss that language when we get down to...
I'm just asking, go there. The size of the lots. Talk to us about the sizes of the lots, because these are changing.
Yep, so we'll provide, again, details on the numbers, and they'll show how they've changed, but the 55 single-family lots are able to be bigger in this proposal than they were under the original proposal. So they are larger lots, the exact number is not upstairs right now, but we will have the comparison table, if you'd like, to show how all those vital stats have changed.
And in terms of the numbers of units set aside for 40B, if you will, would that be the same value in each section, 25%? Is that what you're envisioning or...
That's our intent initially. Mass housing is ultimately the gamekeeper on that issue, but they are flexible and will work with the board within the confines of the law to the extent they can. So if the board has a preference one way or the other, we might be able to work with the board to maybe spew them in one direction or another. But that's not something we would, we would do at the outset, and again, we need board's cooperation to do that.
Have, have you started any preliminary studies yet, or are you waiting to hear from the board that you're in the right direction?
Preliminary studies in what sense?
Have you done any of the other, have you put any of the other portions of the plan together at all yet? Have you looked at any of the water usage, for example, or sewage, and how that's going to differ from the original plan?
Right, so based on the calculations, and it's just pure number of bedrooms, it should be slightly less, so it's the same initial studies that we've done, the same initial conversation would apply. We would then seek comments from the water and sewer department, and our expectation is that we get back comments to the effect that this is more desirable. That's our expectation, we haven't actually done that yet, but we would expect that to be the case, with one member, you know, of the water department available here. But generally speaking, our thought was, we went in this direction to solve those, or to mitigate those types of concerns to some degree. As far as other studies, so traffic, I do not know whether or not the change in building typology will change the traffic count, it likely will in some degree, we will address that. We did receive feedback from the board's traffic expert to our original traffic report, so perhaps in a follow-up, if we go in this direction, we'll task our traffic peer review engineer, or our traffic engineer to report to the board's peer review engineer how the reset may or may not affect traffic counts.
And that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Reed, anything you want to say, or any questions you have right now?
Okay, I just wanted to note, it looks like you have may have redesigned some of your drainage ponds, from what we were seeing at the work session. Perhaps one of them appears to be outside the lot lines, et cetera. So I assume you're going to be taking a look at all of that when you finalize your...
Yes, yeah, and again, we have control, if you recall, we control the entire site, even south and west of the area that's the development area. And we have control of that, so we can move things around in that way.
Right, so if that's the case, then I'm just going to need to understand what your proposal is to be working within that access area. Are you planning on adding that area into, into what's being proposed here? Are you planning on having some sort of an easement? I just want to know what...
So again, we, and I think this was some confusion from the outset, is that we've only shown, and Ed, correct me if I'm mistaken, but on all these plans, recall, we've only shown the green area, which is the area that we were proposing the original development on, but we own all of this down here, so we don't need an easement or anything, we own that. We own all the way back in here, it's all part of the application. The original application describes acreage that extends all the way back into this area. So, you know, keep in mind, and we'll make that even more clear as things move, oops, geez, I almost got you there. We will continue to make that clear so that you, you understand, I mean, this is providing certainty for a large swath of land in town, even though there are wetlands back there, we're now preserving a lot of the space in perpetuity with this project.
So again, I know that we've talked about this a little bit, and I appreciate your showing the area you're essentially developing, but I also anticipate that you're going to be offering to donate portions of that land that's not being developed in some way, shape or form, or preserving it in perpetuity. And I just want to make sure that as part of our final decision, we have a more secure proposal on what that will be, once you finish your engineering.
Okay, our intent would be to just have a condition in the permit itself that is recorded as part of the affordable housing restriction, which is not subject to sunset provisions under the law regarding covenants with land, would have that as a condition that would require it, he maintains open space. So I think if your expectation was doing a formal conservation restriction with the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, that becomes more of an involved process that we wouldn't feel the need to go through, since we have the affordable housing restriction that's going to get, that's going to be going to get recorded. So I think it's as simple as, you know, all the land that is subject to this permit shall be preserved as shown on the plans, and, you know, certain activities would be allowed as far as hiking, you know, whatever else you want to do with, if it dried up over time, became less wet, but it would be preserved.
Why don't you finish your engineering and just note that's something I'm going to want to take a look at before we get to the final, final decision stage of this? Please.
Peter, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing right at this time, I don't need to get further into the engineering matters of the project at this time. Thank you.
Greg, go ahead.
Are you planning on doing this in phases? Are you trying to farm the permits, trying to pull up for a year? I know it's new now, so we're trying to look at it, are you going to do phase one, phase two, phase three, are you going to try to do all three of these?
So let Bishop, I'll let Bishop answer, but I would say another attribute is, we have the condos and the village setting, one of the concerns that was expressed before was just duration of overall construction, where you're constructing 94 homes, it may be a longer buildup period, this probably, and again, you know, we can maybe dig into it, but I think common sense would suggest that the overall buildup time would be compressed as a result of going in this direction. But Bishop can describe what the intent is.
Yes, because we have three different types, now we're talking to three different segments of the market. So this is what's, what's been happening with us in Naperville. So really, it's as if you have three different projects going at the same time. Each, each project normally, on the average, sells about 15 units per year. So now, rather than having 92, 94 units that will sell at 15 units per year, now you're going to have three projects that are going about 45 units per year.
That's one of the questions I have, I'm going to try to pull between 35 to 45 permits per year. Okay, and so you can't actually do it in phases, so like we had at the pines, there was a question, a concern about the construction going through where it was already rented, sold, type things like that. So how do you plan on making the construction work, why you have 17 units?
Our intention right now is to actually build the roadways sufficient to have the three projects going. So we may do like this, these two, enough roadways just like to go to here, so we have enough single-family houses going, and condos and cottages going at the same time. Of course, once we have more detailed engineering, we want to make sure the drainage and the sewer and the water works for everybody.
I'm bringing it up so maybe we can have some answers in the next meeting in regards to that, because obviously, there's going to be road construction equipment, you're going to have contractors, you're going to have cement trucks, you're going to have blacktop trucks, and I'm only seeing you developing one way in and one way out right now. So even if you did the other road in gravel and make that the construction road, however, just maybe we can, after engineering, we all get this out of.
Right.
But we're not going to do it in phases, we're not doing it in phases, we're going to do it all three phases of 45 permits, a year on an average, where we're trying to pull up. Okay?
One other thing I was sticking to, not that this has to be decided tonight, from the side of curiosity, how will the HOA work for the single-family owners versus the condo versus the cottages?
So there will be three different, like this will be a condo, condominium association, this will be homeowners association. So to address this condominium association, so the resident, a resident here will be paying for the, for this association, and then he'll pay, like until, until the roadways are accepted, if and when they're accepted by the town, he'll pay for the, another, so two payments. It's either that, either he makes two payments, or this association will make the payment to the homeowners association.
And what about the cottages, what, what do they follow there?
Same situation.
Okay.
Same situation.
Just to describe it, for those who can't see the board up here, because it's got a little bit small. There, as Bishop was saying, there are almost three projects on a one road. So there's a one big U that goes around, goes in from the road, and then back out the same road. Off of that, there's a cottage development that has its own cul-de-sac. There is a townhouse development, which is just a small U, has three buildings off of it. And then, all the single-family homes are mostly in the back of the, so the bottom of the U. So this is where, when we're discussing, hey, we may develop one major road in, it'll be the one that'll give access to all three of those projects. And then we might maintain the other, the exit as an emergency or construction use only.
I'm just building, inspecting the fire department. Everyone's concerned about apparatus, construction equipment, people living, using the same road. There's a concern about the binder being put down at a later date, when it's going to be completed. I just want to make sure this is all hashed out, and then the project, that I know that I've covered all my bases on it. Because that is a concern of mine. I mean, there is other ways we might be able to make some other easements, construction work. And like Bishop said, if you went in to one of your first cul-de-sacs there, you could have a little surface there, and stopped right there, made that, made that other side an construction line. But if you put the whole binder in...
Yeah, I think there are a couple of different ways we could write into the permit to make sure appropriate signage goes in place. So that way, construction areas are marked off, and emergency access areas are marked off. And that way, it stays out of the homeowner affected...
I know there's women confined here, and they're going to try to keep most of it away.
I think we can come up with something.
Okay.
All right, before I open up to the abutters, do they have any questions, especially regarding the specific changes? Is there anything else left above on the board you want to discuss? Obviously, we'll go back and give them a more direction, once we hear from the abutters. I just know if there's anything else you guys want to add yet?
If the townhomes, if they have garages, the townhomes? I don't recall. I'm just curious.
These, actually, here, I'll show you what that looks like.
I thought in the video, shared garage, like a big shared garage, too, and showed that one more.
Each building, the townhouses do have garages. This is what the building plan is. And we built many of these buildings, and they're really very desirable, very successful, because they do have, each building has a courtyard, and the units, each building, see, each townhouse has one garage, and one parking spot outside. But these, on either side of the U of the building, the two units, two units have garages, and two units don't have garages. They have parking outside. So each building is 12 units, and the 12 units, there are eight garages.
Do they have basement?
Yes.
So the ones that don't have garages, where are we going with their storage?
I'm sorry?
The ones that do not have garages, how do you plan on making it for their storage?
Oh yeah, they have storage. Okay, actually, here, these are the units. There are two units in each building that do not have garages, and do not have basement. They're corner upstairs units. And these are the least expensive, the entry-level price. And there's a market for that as well. They're kind of like a two-bedroom apartment, that, I mean, at today's prices, they go for pretty short, I mean, reasonable price for somebody who just wants to get in.
Are we considering having that town trash picked up? Or you have a dumpster facility on two of these little properties?
We really haven't gotten that far yet.
So that's, you've got some areas...
But that's a very good question. We will need to address that.
The band you have right there, that's just what you've done before? Is that exactly what you're submitting to us?
That's what we've done before, but that's what we're planning on doing now, so we'd be glad to submit that to you as well.
I see, okay.
So open to the common public of the building?
I'm sorry?
So the basements, and the basements of the corner units that don't have the garage, and don't have anywhere, they don't have any access to the basement to put any heavy storage?
They do have access to the basement, and each individual unit that has basement has its own basement, and it's not public, it's not like common.
Did you say that a couple of the units are going to be upstairs units?
That's correct.
Where will their basement?
Those two units will not have basements. Each building will have two units with no basements.
So where will they have for storage, if they have no basement, and no storage, and no parking?
No, they have parking, but no garage.
I mean, they won't have a garage?
Yeah.
No basement or garage?
They have very little storage.
Just based on, I don't think it was the animation, I think it was the actual video. Did I see a long building that had a few garage stalls on it?
That's for the, yes, that's, we have one development, a cottage-style development, that the unit, some units themselves do not have garages, so we built a bank of garages, detached garages for them.
Okay, I was just curious what that was. So that might be back here in here?
That's a consideration as well.
Depending on how...
Sure, yeah.
What's the possibility with this particular development? I know you talked about the issues and concerns around park area or playground and so forth, but I don't know if this affects the overall project cost or development. But what's the possibility of building some sort of a community, I'm going to call it a community clubhouse, to be shared by all three? For the purposes of people who might want to entertain and do other things? Because in some cases, there's going to be some very limited space here, whether it's outdoors or indoors.
Actually, this, in our experience, this has really been, again, a liability rather than a benefit, because, like, we have a development of 220 units of those townhouses, those buildings, 220 units. And we built a really intricate clubhouse that is rarely used, and it's a liability for maintenance, I mean, a cost. It adds a lot to the condominium association fee. And people are saying, you know, they're, I mean, we're long gone from it, but we have, people who are associated with us are on the Board of Trustees. They're considering locking it up and then just not using it. Reason being is, the single-family houses have their own storage, their own... Most units that have basements, they have their own storage, and they invite people to the... There are only two units per building, which add up to six units in the whole project, that do not have big spaces. And those people, you know, the people who tend to buy those tend to be like either young professionals, or, you know, they don't have a whole lot of capacity to invite people. So we, our experience is, a clubhouse is a liability, more so than the benefit.
What about, especially for, well, I won't say especially for any type specifically, I'll take that back. What about making any of the units handicap accessible?
Oh, absolutely. We have to do that.
I don't just mean by having walkways. I mean if...
Yeah, yeah, ramps and...
Ramps, bars, etc.
We have to by code. We have to make certain number of units handicap accessible. Yes, we will.
All right, at this time, I would like to open up the floor to the abutters. If they have any questions, comments regarding what we've heard tonight. Just as a reminder, if you could please put your name and your address on the paper for the record, thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Reed, from Country Hill Drive. Been here 21 years. I pay a significant amount of taxes to this community. It's been a waste of my time for the last hour. I couldn't see anything here, and I think that's my design. I would urge our guests to at least give us, the abutters, and you folks, the committee, the professional courtesy of at least providing us a hard copy of the redesigned plans. We use iPhones, we have cars with smartphones, we shop online, and yet we come in here, and we go back in time. Where's the information technology? It's 2019. You folks are trying to make decisions in a vacuum.
Mr. Reed, you just stopped...
Right there, I'm going to tell you what's going on. They're coming with a preliminary plan. They don't have, they're not going to spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars. This is what they gave us. Same thing, wait a minute, let me finish, let me finish. This is what they've given us. Okay, so at the end of the day, Mr. Reed, everything you're stating, I'm writing down, when we go to these meetings, this is the discussions that we're going to have. We've had one, one meeting. So when you come in here and were saying behind times, I don't want to hear that, because right now, this is exactly what they've given us. I understand what your concerns are, and that'll be something on the next meeting I make sure you'll get.
Let me ask you this. Do you think taxpayers of this community, of which I am one, on Country Hill Drive, and I've been for 21 years, would it have taken much of an effort of this group to provide me with the same copy of what you have?
I got it today. Maybe they could have put it right at the door.
Maybe they could have. That's a good point on your part.
You're welcome.
Don't waste my time now. I just wasted 60 minutes here trying to look, you know, strain my eyes over here. But you get the point that I'm making. These are critical decisions for this community that impact lifestyle, that impact way of life. I see a lot of nodding on this stage going along. I hear that, okay, we've got redesigned plans, less impactful, but I don't get any hard numbers. I hear less entrenchment on those who are but on Country Hill Drive. What is less, quantitatively speaking? I don't see any metrics.
I previously requested that earlier this evening, so we will get that, and we will share the information with you.
But could we have a meeting at some point in time before you give them a lesson? If that ever comes to this?
We're not doing this in a vacuum. We're not just voting on this without any...
Well, let me tell you, with all...
This is going to take over a year, a year, before this comes up.
I would hope at a minimum.
That's our answer, and then it goes to another board.
But do your taxpayers in this community do not at least, we're not going to, you know, macho around here, so we're in this grammar school of students to look at that. My time is important as yours is. When I come in here, I would have hoped that I would have had some tangible, 8x11, so I could look at then versus now. Instead, we're all squinting looking at this, and is that curiously my design?
Mr. Reed, the other thing is, is during the meeting, I'm the only member of this board that was able to actually have this available, and this board's first knowledge of it too. That's the way the law is written. That's why there's reasons like this. Going forward, we'll be sure, when you are in, any type of new design, we'll be sure to make sure we hand one to you.
I think it's important, if you want to get the backing of this community, and you don't want this to erupt in a firestorm, and for your credibility as your board members, that you look at this substantively, because there's not many people behind me now, but they represent even more people. I would just say to you, transparency, I don't see it. If people are going to come out, I've been in Boston all day. I'm tired as you are tired. If I'm going to come here, and I have to answer a 5 o'clock alarm, make my time worthwhile.
Just, did you attend the working session that we had, that was open to the public?
I've attended many sessions.
You attended the working session that they had?
I didn't say that. Did I? I said I didn't.
And I asked you if you attended the working session that they had.
What day, what time are you talking about?
That was September 12th. It was open to the public. We announced at the meeting, and they did bring this temporary plan then.
Then why don't we have copies tonight?
It was at the meeting. I mean, did you go, I mean...
Listen, listen.
We announced publicly that that meeting would be taking place, and the public could go. They couldn't speak, but they could go.
But listen, 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 so...
Sir, I'm sorry, I think, now, wait, wait. Honestly, I think we hear you, we really do. We hear you.
You get your...
Let me finish. We hear you, we get your point. It's a fair, valid point. I can't see, I asked them if I could get together and get a better description of what they're doing. What you're saying is a very, very fair, valid point. However, having said that, at the last public meeting we had, all we did, all we did, was ask the developer to come back with a different concept that gave us more of what we were looking for. We didn't ask for large schematics, we didn't ask for anything else at that point. We simply asked them to come back with a different concept, period. There was a working meeting. You, like everyone else, including me, which I did not attend, did have an opportunity to go to that meeting. This is only the very beginning. We're not not hearing what you're saying. We're not disagreeing with what you're saying. We're telling you, this is simply a starting point, period.
Mr. Reed, I would lay down with your concern. When I next meet, I'm going to make sure that this stuff that you're concerned is going to be heard. These are the reasons why we have these meetings, to listen to what the abutters say. So I understand your grief, it's, say no, this is a working session going forward. We're trying to find, put different ideas out there, see what the people think, what we feel, what they want to bring in front of us. Multiple meetings before we even talk about it. This could be one of the things that are going to be made many more.
Well, Mr. Logan, all I'm saying is, for these meetings, to be fruitful, beneficial, and appreciative of everyone's time, the committee included, my time, my fellow neighbors, even the presentists here tonight. If we can come thoroughly prepared, meaning, I'm a guest here, I think thoroughly prepared to the extent of being provided with documents that I can compare what was, and what potentially is, so that we can make more substantive reflection and evaluation of what is happening.
This is right here, I understand you didn't have it in front of you. It's right here on the end. The new one is presented over there on the screen. So they did try to bring a couple of different designs from the original, to where we're coming up with some ideas. Again, this is why they present this, they feel the board, the board comes up with these questions, the abutters give us some answers, what their concerns are. We write it down, and go to the next meeting and present all the questions to the abutters.
Okay, all right, I will be the dead loss on this, but I mean, this is hardly state of the art. I mean, I realize this might be an old school, but for 2019, information technology, iPhones, lane assist in our cars, Bluetooth, jeez, come on, this is pathetic. Give us something that we all can observe as taxpayers, in fairness and in transparency. Thank you.
Yep, I didn't know if they had anything to say. Anyone else who wishes to speak, come forward. So again, just please sign your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Marcin Ferreira, and I live in Stonegate Landing. When I first bought my home in 2007 in Stonegate Landing, I was promised roads made of gold, to be facetious. An awful, awful, awful lot of promises. Beautiful sidewalks, beautiful this, beautiful that. I love my home. Now, my home, the backyard, is going to a but. The new neighborhood, Strawberry Fields. I am very concerned about all of these promises that they're making to all of the new people that would be moving into Strawberry Fields. Because I was very excited about moving into Stonegate Landing. I've been very happy with my home, and I love my neighborhood, but it just turned into a major crazy, you all know. We had the original contractors, the Tarn and Echos, which were going to give us the streets of gold. And now we have the new owner, Rich Federoff, which is not doing a whole lot. All of a sudden, he decided there was going to be an HOA, and we all had to come up with $2,000, which we didn't do. But my basic, 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 basic concern is the worry about what in the world is going to happen when there's a whole new neighborhood that abuts our property? When you drive into Stonegate Landing, we're... When you drive into Stonegate Landing, we're all on the right. We have the woods behind us. There's, it, what's gonna happen? What's gonna happen to the water? What's gonna happen to us? And then making all these beautiful homes, and it's gonna be all this beautiful promises. And something's gonna turn out to be the same thing as Stonegate Landing. We still, in 2007, acted being promised in 2007, or it was gonna be 2008 that we were gonna have our driveways put in. We still don't. We have to pay for it ourselves, of course. We don't have driveway, nice, beautiful black tops. Not yet. There's a big hole in the street when we come in on the 138. Nobody's taking care of anything. And this just reminds me of the past. All of this, it's gonna be gorgeous, wonderful, marvelous. And that all I'm saying is what's gonna happen? What's gonna happen to us? Are we gonna lose our privacy trees? What's gonna happen to us on Stonegate Landing? Those of us on the right? Those of us with the woods behind us? Those of us with the privacy? There's animals to worry about. There's water to worry about. They just, in, in my opinion, it's gonna destroy a lot. I don't see this room for a whole new. And I'm not an engineer, so, okay, so you can laugh at me, but I just don't see where there's room for all of this housing. And where are the access roads coming from? So, anyway, that's, that's me.
Man, you, can I, can I ask you?
Um, you have legitimate concerns, first of all, I'm sure. Not just from your perspective, but from the same perspective as a lot of other people. And in some respects, I'm sure, from some of us up here as well, going forward. Can you, at some point, take some time and put some of your various, your questions, make them more specific about what you're looking for? And I'll give you an example. You talked about being the butter and it being in your backyard. You must have questions about water mitigation in your backyard, or the, or the trees, or something back there. Can you put some of those questions in writing and get them to our chairperson so that we can add them to our long list of questions?
Yeah, most definitely.
But I think if you were more precise, if you were more precise rather than the generality, and I know this is, that would help us a lot.
Much, definitely I will. But who do I, who do I send it to?
Uh, to Nicole.
Oh, I have your number. Okay. Alright, well, thank you so much for listening to me. As I say, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a person.
Hey, and just so, I mean, again, this is mine, but it is a different developer. He's done two other projects. It's not, I know what you're going through with your, I mean, can't, can't talk about it too much right now, but I do know what you're going through. He's a different developer, so that's all. I know, I know it doesn't mean too much, but I, it's, it's significant.
I do understand that. I do understand that.
Okay.
I'm still waiting for my streets made of gold.
Anybody else who wishes to speak? If the, I'm just so, if the, I'm more bothered than, oh, okay.
Hi, Rick Boyer, Somerset Ave. I was just wondering, Rick, is there a way that we can put out where the signs are that put water ban, and we know about the festival, and we know about this, to let these meetings, to let the town know what's going on in their town? We, I didn't see anything until Facebook came up last night, and my neighbor came over and said, hey, the meeting's tomorrow night. Can we put that on a blinking big arrow sign that's out there, 40B meeting tonight? So the town of Dyson knows what is being planned? Rather than it's all, it's all hush, hush. No one knows about this. Talk to people at the store. No one knows.
What's your last name?
Boyer, you know why you are. You have signs up there that, that tell you about a traffic fair coming up in November. Let's put a sign up that says, hey, there's a 40B complex going in your town that's gonna dramatically affect how you drive on 138, and no one knows. You talk to them at the store, they're like, oh, wait, when, where's that going? Really? I didn't know. They need to know. You know? We only know because we either get a registered letter in the mail, or there's a traffic fair.
That's, I completely agree. That, that is something that yourself and myself could definitely address, especially with Mallory, the town administrator. I'm, I'm not sure if she's the one that oversees the, the sign that you're talking about. Tom, the, the highway department does? Okay, so, but, but just, but still, we should reach out to, I mean, both of them. I, I know Mallory, and that's one of the things that she does, is big with community outreach and informing the public and stuff like that. That's something on my list to talk to her about, and I'm sure she would, it would mean just as much coming from in a butter too, knowing that.
If not a sign that, that advertises for all the other things, let this town know. We have, you members up there that are making decisions for this whole entire town, and I don't see many most of the same faces that I hear every single time. Other than that, do they know? No, because it's snuck in. Oh, surprise, Strawberry Link, how'd that get there? And boom, you guys did it. No one's telling the town what's going on. That's all I want to say.
Good evening, my name's John Fornia, and I have a couple of questions to split the wood in a minute. How many would yous would favor from the building project are looking for a condo or a home right now? Keep raising it.
I'm sorry?
Are you looking, and how many up there right now are looking for a home or a condo, raising it?
Not yet. Soon, but not yet.
Was there 21E done back there in that property?
Sir, I just wanna be clear about the, a butter's comment period is an opportunity for you to certainly ask the board or the developer questions about the project, but individual personal questions, I would respectfully ask you to just.
Thanks for your time.
So, 742 Somerset Ave, I'm in the waters. Chris, S O W D E N. My question is about the traffic study. I was unable to attend on the 12th, so I thought, well, maybe this has been discussed.
We have a traffic study, and Nate brought the engine to, we've done two or two working on it for the next meeting, we'll discuss. Peter Williams is waiting on a few things as well. But we have two guys working on it, one from the town, and one from the, um, developer.
I have a question about what that actually looks at. Does it consider the sight line when you look north?
Oh, yeah, we've brought.
The cars disappear in the distance. And I stood there and watched, and.
I've said it, I've got one of my concerns.
Where cars had traveled at 45 or 50 miles an hour on top.
That mean that you could, the meeting that you could attend.
I wanted to be sure someone actually is looking at that.
It was discussed a lot, the, the last meeting we had, yeah.
Last public meeting or not, but if you weren't, there was a lot of discussion, and remember, I can't see, so I'm going to have it discussed.
Okay, I was here, that's what I saw.
Right, there was discussion about the hill there, accidents and things that have occurred, and folks have lost their lives and so forth. How that would be affected by the bus, by children, by vehicles trying to merge in and out and so forth. So that has been brought up as, as part of the traffic study, yes.
I, one other concern is I have an artesian well on my property, which is very close proximity to the proposed drainage pond. Now, that's causing all the stormwater runoff from the roads, and automotive fluids are gonna end up in that stormwater in here. Gonna end up in that pond near my well. I have a free session.
What's your address, Chris?
742 Somerset Ave. I'm on public water, but I have an artesian well. And when the water supply runs short, I'm planning on using the well. So, I don't need more water sources.
Just so you know, regarding the traffic study, I mean, you, you as well as anyone in the public have access to anything that we have access to, is all public record. You can certainly take a look at this, but like I said, there probably, there will be a new one coming before us, I mean, with more details regarding this project, which anyone can come in at any time and take a look at. If there's ever anything specific that you want answered, I mean, I, you've already have access to everything that we do too, so.
Okay, when you say come in, where, where do I go to see this?
Uh, Nicole, at the, uh, at the, um, the old, at the current town hall, the bottom floor. That's where her office is. Uh, from 8:01 Monday through Thursday, so.
If you'd like, so I'm, I'm 20 hours a week. But there is someone in the office who has more time than I do. If you'd like, email me, my email is on the website. Any concerns you have, send them to me. And if you'd like me to set out things for you to come in when I'm not there, like I know 8:01 is, most people are working, I get that. But if you'd like me to leave stuff out for you, um...
Hi, my name is Henry Diaz, I live in a little street near Dyson. First of all, I would like to say that it's always great to see growth in a community. My biggest concern would be the school system. What impact would that have on Dyson Elementary, the middle school, the police department, fire department? I mean, we gladly pay taxes to see our systems improve, but I mean gladly welcome new additions to our community. I would just really ask the committee that they take a deep, deep consideration of our school system. It's not great, but it's our community. I mean, if we add another 100, 130 people to this town, we're talking about how many apartments, bedrooms, rooms, any public? About 280, let's cut that in half. 140.
One, one, now we discussed that, the first meeting, I don't believe you were there, but that's fine. Um, for the state, it says that for 40Bs especially, it's up to the school committee and the school department to fit the needs of the growing community, not for us to prohibit what happens in the development for, and because of the schools, just so you know that. Um, but the, the school committee is, I mean, involved, and they are, they get the same information we do. I'm sure they discuss it. When they have, when we, they have more definitive plans, is when they will probably be discussing more of what their impact is gonna be as well too. Um, but is there any, anything specific you're thinking about, or just in general?
My just, my, my concern is just the children.
Yeah.
We, we see what's going on in the community now.
I know.
And, and just adding more children to that school. My daughter already has a trailer, which is fine, it's a great trailer, it's a good setup, but you add more children to that, we can't just keep adding more and more trailers.
This is the type of project where, um, for better or worse, which, you know, is, it, it becomes irrelevant unfortunately, or fortunately, to what we have to hear and what we have to vote on, whether we agree or disagree with that part of it. It's not relevant to the type of project that's being posed from our perspective, unfortunately or fortunately.
I totally get that, but it is our, um, the committee has a, the board, I'm sorry, has an ability to not go forward with the project if it is gonna impact the community in such a way where it's detrimental to families. And, I mean, we have faith in you guys and what you do every day, and we have experts at any of that, but my request is solely just to, you know, take all the weight from our community and make wise decisions. That's all, thank you.
Is there anybody else before we move on? Um, again, like I said, it does not have to be on the butters, it could be anybody in the public. We're all set for that aspect? Alrighty, um, do you guys wanna address anything directly that the butters or the public has stated? Or do you wanna talk more about the plans? I mean, we have, at least had over about 35 minutes before we have to adjourn, so. Okay, so, um, is there anything else that we, that we, I mean? The, the types of layouts they're presenting?
I have a couple of concerns, uh, I mean, they're gonna talk, now we should talk about.
Yep. No, go ahead.
I'm concerned on the six units that he's talking about. Um, the townhouse is not having a storage facility for their tenant or the owner. I know he stated something about there is an open basement. That's to go further into the, the meeting. We can get into that a little more detail, put a condition on something, you know. At this moment in time, maybe they can put up a, a couple of storage garages, things like, looks like garages. There could be a couple of storage, I'm talking six units somewhere on the project. Or we can while them to make sure the basement is accessible for a storage facility for those six units in the townhouse. We did, I did discuss with them regards to the parking for the bus turnaround. This, it looks like there's a little bit of adequate parking right there. Um, I do wanna check and make sure on the property of, um, Chris Sulea, 742 Somerset Ave, where is artesian well?
I'm just, I'm exactly, you guys remember, is this a house picture there? Or I, I just didn't.
Well, I'm gonna look into this.
Okay, I, I'm just curious, okay.
I'm just saying, there was a, I had, he says he has town water, he does have an artesian well. I'm sure that Peter Williams and all them guys that were doing all the engineering will defer the water away from all the property. Just wanna be sure it's a condition that's met.
Yeah, I see, yeah, that's, of course.
But on the houses, how do you guys feel of the style of homes? Not saying, no, the other thing that goes further into the meetings going forward is we, you know, he's not gonna have 1, 2, 3, the same type of homes.
Right.
Sitting side by side, like the video I saw showed, two houses that stand side by side. That was only in the concept.
Can you tell me, um, overall with these units, how many potentially of each type of unit would be on one floor?
Hi, Jonathan, Jonathan Day. Greg was still, I think, had a point he was bringing up. I'm sorry, Jonathan.
I'm sorry, Greg.
That's okay. I just, like I said, Jonathan's question is valid. Um, doesn't, but I just wanna make sure that every one of us that is sitting here right now amongst the board members, um, obviously, um, we have to come up with, okay, are we content with the style of condos? Are we, I mean, the townhouses, are we content with the style of cottages? We haven't had any house designs yet. Obviously, he's gonna come with five, six designs at that point. Those guys come in front of us, and at that point, they, we review them, that's further meetings going forward. We look at them, we agree, we give the conditions on the bathrooms, I was gonna work with those as things that go forward in our meetings.
Um, one question that I had, so the houses that you presented the first meeting, are you sticking with those styles for the single-family homes, or is that changing? Okay, okay, so, so those.
The ones that you presented the, the first meeting.
Those are, and then when you guys have more of a directive, we'll get more formal plans for the cottages and the townhouses.
And, um, Bishop, in the next meeting, can we make copies of the houses so we can show Mr. Reed and anyone else that's sitting on this? What type of homes are gonna be? So these questions, if, if they do have accurate concerns, always seen his pictures. These are the designs they wanna see, just to see what kind of things they're up against, how big the house lots are gonna be. I know this is stuff with further going down in the engineering. We said definitions of back lots in meeting with your brothers, so they understand how much, um, they're gonna have vegetation between their property and, and the other property of your brothers. We also discussed about whether some, maybe some trees or some abidities in back of some of these properties going forward if it was gonna be a high-construcure. But I believe that the last, at our meeting, when we talked about this drawing here, we were gonna leave a little more of a setback from the property line to your brothers. But, I mean, no matter what, come fall, come winter, we're gonna see each other. And, um, that's some of the concerns I know they're having. And fences, then, you know, that's something we can all discuss to another time. But right now, I just wanna know, going to the next meeting that I'm gonna sit down with these guys, are we comfortable with the townhouse, the cottage, and the single-family homes?
Uh, personally, yes, I am. You guys, Jason?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. It's, it's different. I would just like to, just a random question would be, this is comparable to La Barron Hills, correct? Do you, how do La Barron Hills over in, in Lakeville, how does, how do they, how do the folks there feel about cottages on one side, townhomes on another, single-family homes on another? Do you have any issues selling homes or selling properties?
You only have two types of homes on that one, right?
Okay.
You don't have all three.
What development they've had, any that's shared?
Actually, the trend nationwide is to go to, to mixed, mixed housing like that. And, and, and people like it, actually. I mean, a lot of people, um, in, in, in La Barron, there is actually apartments as well as part of the 40B approval. So a lot of people go from apartments. So a lot of people go from apartments, they buy a half a duplex, then they buy a single-family, and then some of them move on to, like here, I mean, so, so it, it offers a more dynamic mix, it's not just, okay, standard, quarter car.
That's why I'm.
Sure, absolutely.
The type of homes, at least let them go forward with the design?
I'm definitely for more of a mix. From my perspective, as long as we have a type of model that can accommodate partly, certainly more people with disability, also more people who are senior and simply because they're seniors or may ultimately have disability and have more of a need for one-floor type of environment.
And I, I don't want to speak on behalf of her because she's not here, but I know after the meeting you had with Mallory, based on what she has given us input on, it seems like, I'm sure this would be much more upper style as to what she was trying to accomplish after that meeting. Like I said, she obviously hasn't seen this yet, but I'm confident that, I'm sure this would probably pique her interest a lot, a lot more.
Okay, so the house design's good. Now, the next meeting that we're going to have, we're going to be talking in regards to trying to get, the traffic engineers going to be involved with the next meeting?
So, do we have the date yet?
That's, that's, well, I was saving that for the end, that was something we were discussing, so, I believe the fourteenth of November? That's, Margery was informing that that was the date of the dates that we are all available, that was the date that worked best for, for them.
That's the traffic study?
Yeah, I mean, that will be our next public hearing, in which, in which that will be one of the, one of the agenda topics, correct?
Is that still doable at this stage? I mean, I think we were also at the, when we were coming up with different date ideas to present to the board, we were expecting a little bit more presented tonight, so. I don't want to jump ahead into traffic if we're still trying to get more of a full preliminary set of engineering designs on this.
Well, here's, here's what I'm thinking. There have been such broad concerns expressed about traffic in particular, and we get to have a meeting with both traffic engineers present, and at this time, we have a presentation from our engineer, our, our engineer submitted the report to the board, the board submitted the report to the board's traffic engineer, and we now have that peer review. So I don't think it would be impossible for us to respond to that peer review and incorporate the vital stats for this project into that review, and then have a hearing dedicated to those issues sometime in November, November fifteenth, if that's an available date, because...
Fourteenth, yep.
So, you know, even since the apartment development was approved for this project, there were concerns about the road profile and site distances, and I think we'd like to put those to bed. So my hope would be that we could have a hearing on traffic and then also submit that night, or shortly beforehand, and I'll get to that in a second, more developed plans that respond to get to the additional comments we heard this evening, and then engineer the development that is proposed schematically for the board's review. So to the extent we don't use all of the board's time at the hearing on the fourteenth, we could then maybe, I don't know, if the board's peer review engineer could be there, but then maybe just have some preliminary discussion regarding more of all plans that night.
Right, so that was one thing that I was going to discuss. Were you anticipating on another working session between now and our next public hearing or no? I'm, I'm just curious, that's all.
I don't, I don't think so, but I think, I'd encourage the traffic engineers to get together and hash out any differences they have between now and then.
Can you put the other players together? Can you put the other players that you're talking about together two weeks prior to fourteen?
So, that's something that has handcuffed us in this process, and I think we've been, we've tried to, because we altered our plans, okay, it has required this board to take a little bit more time to digest and to, to get plans in two weeks before. For purposes of the next hearing, I don't think that's necessarily feasible. I would ask, and I know the board has this rule of the two weeks before, but we will get the board those plans as soon as we can. I would hope that we could at least discuss them in the context of a public hearing, having seen them, whether it's forty-eight hours before or seventy-two hours before, at the hearing, to the extent, again, we're not discussing traffic, maybe if there's some extra time and the plans were received, we could have, you know, a round robin as far as, I see this, I see that, to the extent the board's peer review engineers had a chance to look at the board developed plans, we could have some discussion at that hearing, rather than saying, no, we're not going to look at them because we didn't get them two weeks before, and therefore, so I just, we'd ask for just some flexibility if that opportunity presents itself.
My concern about that is, one, a shorter amount of time doesn't give each of us necessarily a chance to digest what you provided, but also frankly, hearing what the public is saying. Public wants an opportunity to review plans and to see what's out there. Seventy-two hours to get it to us, or even ninety-six hours, and then to get it to the public for dissemination is not enough time.
I...
I would rather, I would rather see this meeting postponed to a little later in the next week or November, or even the first week in December.
So as far as, I think that the two-week requirement can unnecessarily delay the 40B process, okay, and I appreciate that you want as much time to review them before the hearing, but you can do a lot of productive discussion. If we do present a plan, and again, these plans are going to be publicly available for the next month, so anyone that's interested can go to the CBA's office, we will make efforts to make them available electronically through a Dropbox link that could be disseminated. So to the extent there's any, and again, what we're talking about presenting is the engineering details, but to the extent there's any opportunity for anyone that's interested to review the plan that's going to be available for the next month, that shows a lot of the critical elements of that design, if there's some opportunity available to have a discussion at the hearing on the fourteenth, rather than delay that hearing, if there's time available in addition to the traffic discussion, we'd like to be able to present whatever we have, and you can comment on it at that hearing, if it's truly before the hearing, seventy-two hours, however long, we'd ask that, under these circumstances, where it's been an extended amount of time, in part because of the plan change, in part because of the two-week requirement, we'd ask that you offer some flexibility if, if we can make them available. But I think most of the hearing is going to be taken up with traffic anyway, but...
Today's ten fifteen, our next meeting's eleven, fourteen.
Ten, right.
You're saying you need a month to get us to drawings?
Well, two weeks would be, two weeks from now, so we need more than two weeks. We've, we may...
Because the board has this piece of, you know, eight and a half by eleven piece of paper, that, right now, they've given you as much information as they possibly can, and I think the abutters who, public who've been here have done as much as they can with this information as well. Your, your engineering very well could change pieces of this. So I think you've got to get that engineering done, at the very least, before we really start pushing our public hearings. And I understand the point that you're making, and down the road, it may not be, it may be more appropriate to waive the two-week timeframe, but right now, when we're talking about a new concept, a new layout, you have to put some engineering into it. I think that this board in this town, this community, and particularly what the public's saying, you really need to give that information to the, to the board. I know we talked at the work session about possibly trying to do the traffic engineering discussion in November, when I read through the preliminary peer review comments by Niche Engineering, you know, one of the comments is that they don't have any schematics to be able to run information on these interior roadways. We don't even know the width of those roadways, we don't know how, how large these lots are, we're not sure where the drainage ponds are falling within a very, very highly wet area that has a lot of conservation elements associated with it. And I, I truly think that we're asking to come back in and just have people talk in, in hypotheticals, and it's not a productive use of people's time. And I, frankly, I just, I don't want to do that, I want this process to be as, as informed as possible for the board members, and knowing that the traffic engineer, if you're able, if your traffic engineer can respond to the peer reviewer in two weeks, our peer reviewer is not going to be able to respond to that because he's asking for information, that's what his comments were, please give me a whole bunch of information that I'm missing right now, I think you may not have calculated this right in these areas, I think perhaps you're using the wrong set of figures in these areas. For, for that to be responded to within two weeks, that doesn't give the peer reviewer time to be able to look that over and provide their own set of comments, because there may be more or there may not be, to be able to have a fair conversation for this board. And that's what I think is, you know, if we're going to have a true traffic discussion, I'd rather do it where we've had an opportunity for exchange between the traffic reviewers. And I'm not sure it can be done until you've at least done your preliminary set of engineering on this. So I, again, I, I was expecting a little bit more, and when I sat down at the beginning of this meeting, I thought we would possibly be at a point where traffic may make sense in the fourteenth, but as I'm sitting here right now, I'm not sure I feel is the appropriate timeframe, I think we're, we're rushing it, I'd rather they do their preliminary engineering design, if that's possible, within two weeks, three weeks, we set a date to have that conversation, and we push traffic out to a December meeting to be fair to everybody. They can go back and forth in the meantime, and then we might have an ability to, to have a more robust traffic conversation.
See how far along we are, we may be farther along in the detail than I anticipated.
We never really was, it was never our plan, because the problem is the two-week requirement. It was never, because, because based on that, we would have had to submit the engineering or more developed plan two weeks ago, which would have been impossible. Not only that, we wanted to get first the feedback from the board, yeah, this, this is okay, I took the risk and I asked the engineering team to, to go ahead, even, even though we haven't gotten the word from the board, go ahead and start the, the engineering, the process has started, and we will be able to deliver it to the board, knowing that preliminarily, we, we have a meeting November fourteenth, we will be able to deliver it two weeks in advance, deliver the engineering, the plan, preliminary engineering plan, we'll be able to deliver them in two weeks. But that's because we, we took the risk of, of starting working on it two weeks earlier. So, so, yeah, if, 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 we will be, we're happy to do, to meet the two-week requirement if we are able to consider, for, in the future, as the plans are more developed, if, you know, that we can provide information a little bit less than the two weeks prior to the meeting, just so, to keep things moving.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm personally not opposed to that at all, I, I think one reason why for the, like, for the, to the two weeks was, like, one, for like Margery was saying, one party has to respond, one party has to respond, and we have to review it. I think one reason why, two, we just didn't want to be getting hypothetically speaking, a twenty-four-page document the night before and saying, did you guys look at it yet? Not that you'd do that, but I think that was part of the reasoning for this twenty-four, for the two-week, but I haven't personally got that about you, I'm not...
Peter Williams is going to look at this too. You have given an engineer a set of drawings, and trying to have him do it in two weeks, I'm not trying to speak out of line to you, but it's not quite a good a task for you to be able to do, but within two, three, what, less than two weeks?
Yeah, I, I mean, if they're, if we're not opposed to, I mean, I'm not saying right now we decide from X date on, they now can submit less time, I think it's going to depend on what we're requiring, what...
Precedence by doing this.
Suggest if I could, for the purposes of moving along, because there is, there's an open question as to what can be gotten when, to make sure that it can be gotten within that two-week timeframe to get to us, to go back to that, as I said, and as our counsel indicated as well, that I would propose that we change the date to, here we go, say three weeks later, which I believe would be December fifth, and that gives you ample time to get the information to us, I hope, so that you can get it back, and our engineers can go back and forth, and the traffic folks can go back and forth as well, so that we do have material two weeks in advance, which is just before Thanksgiving.
Jonathan, I do understand what you're saying, but just so you know, I'm looking at the calendar for the dates that we all submitted, that none of us, that Thursday would work, I mean, I, what would, Turner, I guess, you know, how, how are you feeling on this, like, I mean, do we, what's, I just want to try to get a feedback before we make any kind of decision here?
So, you know, a couple of things. There was some comment about whether or not people were able to attend the work session. I think you can have a productive, maybe I can disagree on this one, but I think you can have a productive meeting, have a round robin, and a discussion about aspects of a project and concerns, without having a formal peer review available two weeks in advance, or, you know, twenty-four hours prior to a hearing. So, I, I really do think we need to keep the hearing on the fourteenth on in some form or another. And if we have plans to this board, and we have additional information, whether or not it's complete, two weeks prior to that, that should be sufficient to have a productive conversation, to keep whatever the comments are coming, and keep the process moving forward, because speed is always of critical concern under chapter forty, it's one of the basic tenets of the law, and to schedule a meeting now, you know, in December would, would really be problematic. Now, that being said, as I've indicated a couple of times during this hearing process, we understand that we've gone through a plan change here. So I don't want to feel, I don't want anyone to feel as though we're rushing the board, but at the same time, I think we should have hearings at regular intervals to make sure everybody's working, because if we were to say have a peer review, another peer review section between now and the next hearing, then we may hear comments that, oh, we didn't have an opportunity to see the evolution, or we didn't have an opportunity to get any, to give any feedback. So I think, whatever it is, I think we should keep that meeting on for the fourteenth, and have some additional discussion about the plan in whatever form it exists, two weeks prior to that.
Not opposed to that.
Plan, I'm sorry, we will have a plan to you, in, two weeks prior to, I mean, by the, by, in two weeks from now, we will have a plan to you.
We will have comments to the peer review, we will have a response, particularly with regard to site distance, trip generation, some additional information. Now, your peer review engineer might not have an opportunity to fully develop a response, and I hope they could in two weeks, but whether or not they're able to do that, I think we should, if their comments even come on that night, I think it would be productive, since that's such a major area of concern, to have a good discussion, you know, a free-for-all, if you will, on issues regarding traffic concerns with whatever information we have that night, and I know it won't be hypotheticals, you know, it might not be a hundred percent fully engineered in all the details, but even then, we might say, hey, look at this, look at that. And this is all at the applicant's expense, you know, regardless, so the applicant's willing to have that discussion, pay the traffic experts to be here, I think it would be productive. And it would keep the process moving, where, you know, we're averaging about one hearing.
So, yeah, going about the, the interval, so I, just proposing that we schedule a date for November and December tonight? I'm not saying we can't, just asking if that's what you're looking for.
I think it would be helpful to get something on the calendar for December as well.
Oh, for the town's meeting? Seven, yeah.
Our council's final thoughts as to whether this is doable based on what you're saying, because I think that's part of where our direction needs to come from.
What specifically, meeting on the fourteenth is scheduled, and then taking a date in December?
So as, as I heard the developer say, you should be able to comply with the two-week requirement, two weeks in advance requirement, so by the thirty-first, you'll be able to submit as much engineered as you have available plans to the board, and in all likelihood, some sort of peer review to the traffic people. So I guess my suggestion at that stage then would be that we put the presentation of those engineered plans on first. If they want to bring the traffic people here to get started with that conversation after they've gone through the engineered plans, that's fine, if the developer's willing to pay for that, but I don't know that we should start with traffic. I would suggest that we start with them presenting the engineered plans, because I would, I, I mean, unless nothing changes in this conceptual schematic that they have from those plans, it's likely that you're going to hear a revised presentation of what you heard tonight. it's likely that you're going to hear a revised presentation of what you heard tonight, and I think you should start with that. And I don't think it's harmful for our peer reviewer to be sitting, listening to any comments that the butters raise about traffic, et cetera. He was not present when they presented traffic at the first meeting.
Right.
He, I know that Mr. Logan did a very good job of presenting those concerns at the work session, but having him here to listen to that's not a problem. That would be my suggestion, if that's okay.
That's fine. We can present the plan first, and we'll do it the opposite way, and we'll present the plan, the engineering, and then depending on the time, we may or may not get into traffic, and also the status of the peer review as of that two-week prior date, if we can make a determination about the agenda once we have our...
Sure. So, I mean, we'll take an official vote in a moment, but just so, for December, just so we can start talking about what dates work best for you guys as anything, I mean, we have every Tuesday works for us in December, the twelfth, which is a Thursday, and then the twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday. I know it's the day after Christmas, and of course, the twenty-fourth is kind of pushing it, so obviously, that's probably going to be an out for everybody, but, and then the next Tuesday would be the thirty-first, which is New Year's Eve, so that probably won't work. Obviously, it's a risky time for weather and holidays, and that's got to come first. Safety...
Is it Tuesday's or Thursday?
Tuesdays. The only Thursdays that work in December are the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Oh, just...
Right, yeah, just the twelfth, yeah. So if it had to be, if it had to be a Thursday, it would only be the twelfth of December.
Or any evening?
Correct. Excluding Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
How about...
So we got, that would leave us with the tenth, with the third, the tenth, and the seventeenth. I mean, they're all, like, those three work for everybody in this board, so...
Is this all convenient for all the board members?
I mean, according to our schedules, yeah, absolutely. That's fine for us. Is that best for you guys?
It would be best.
That's, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Right.
December tenth is Tuesday.
So we're going to twelve?
They would be, right, that's what they're proposing. I mean, that, according to our plans, that seems to work for everybody, and it doesn't matter to me.
Which date?
Are you, you're good? Okay. Marguerite, how about you? That work for you guys?
I suggest that maybe we rethink space at that time, that maybe we could find a town hall location so that it's easier for people to see. It's just spread out here at this stage, and I think you can accommodate about fifty people, so. Just, I wouldn't set that date tonight, because I don't think you know exactly what might be available, maybe between now and then, and the November meeting.
I know from previous meetings, before I was on the board, if, I believe they sometimes bent into selectmen's offices, I mean, non-office meeting room, if it wasn't on a Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, I mean, we probably have some room to play with, this old town hall, so there are definitely other spaces we can definitely look into.
I try to still have a large enough space, because you are getting a decent number of butters present, but I'm just not sure if it needs to be in this building.
I, just in terms of, because of short notice, I think the twelfth, we are planning on keeping here, because that was a little, we need to decide that one, at least tonight and weekend.
You mean the fourteenth?
The fourteenth, I'm sorry, yeah, the fourteenth of November.
Well, we're getting on also, talking to Tommy Ferry about that sign, he put out for the 40B, so we've got to watch for public...
Yeah, I'll talk to Marguerite, Mallory tomorrow as well, so.
Yeah.
Can I suggest one thing?
Sure.
I suggest that, yeah, bring one or two copies of the new plans and leave them out on a table at the back of the room prior to the meeting, so any attendees can peruse through them.
Yeah, as I indicated, we can find a few ways to do that. We probably also make a Dropbox link available, and we can also include a link to the video.
Yeah, that was one thing I was going to bring up, too, is we do need the link for public record as well, so if you guys can email that link to Nicole when you have a chance. Okay, so I guess, can I have a motion that we vote at least the next meeting to be November fourteenth, Thursday, that will be here at seven? Hey, oh, I'm asking if I can have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we be next for the publicating, covering fields, November fourteenth, here at the middle school, starting at seven PM.
A second?
A second, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, so it's been voted, the public can know that next, it'll be the Thursday, November fourteenth is the next public hearing, that'll be here in the middle school at seven PM. As for our December meeting, we are waiting to vote officially on that, so we may need to be changing meeting spaces, and we need to talk to the town hall as to what other meetings venues would work, so we are waiting for the December. But once again, November fourteenth, seven PM is the next public hearing here at the middle school. We're about to, getting closer to our journey. Is there anything else, Bishop or Attorney Agostino, that you feel like you need from us specifically to move forward? You have, I mean, you have everything you guys need? All right, any last closing comments?
All right, so I just want to make sure on November fourteenth, by November first, you're going to have to us preliminary drawing, with some engineering design on it in our office, so that we can send off to our engineering department to look at it, to have some designs, setbacks, more attendant areas of wetland, things like that, that might never have to be on it, most you can, and we'll have it ready on the first to our office.
Sure. First.
I just want to make sure. And that's all I have right now.
When will be the more detailed plans for the architectural layouts and everything for the condos and the townhouses?
Can I have all that by the thirty-first?
That's fine. Yep, I'm just, I'm just, out of curiosity, okay, excellent.
Can I ask that they send a copy of my plans directly to my office?
Yes, okay. You want to send a full-size page of...
Any information, you send the whole package.
Okay.
All right, before I ask for a motion, Marguerite, is there anything else you want me to discuss? You all set? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Gentlemen, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right.